Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brown Planning and zoning Commission meeting. Today is July 7, 2022, and my name is Joanne Veely. I'm the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting, they have an option of attending in person and also by Zoom. And if you are tuning in, I ask that you mute yourself. And if you do want to address the commission, unmute. Tell us who you are, give your name and address, and then you'll be able, you'll be called upon to address the commission. And when you are not speaking, please remember to mute yourself so that we don't get feedback and background noise out here. And basically, the meeting will be hosted on a town website, and I'm going to ask our planner, Lori Juicy, to make the call, roll call at this time for the members.
John Michael O'Brien.
He's absent.
Diane Gersey.
Here.
Timothy Sigma.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Sandra Coppola.
Here.
Scott Hamel.
He's absent.
Chairman Veely.
Here.
Peter Zarabozza, alternate, I believe he has to be excused still. Alternate Andrew Legnani.
Absent.
And alternate Steve Biella Jr.
And Steve is online.
Steve, just unmute and acknowledge you're here. He's frozen.
Come here. Come here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay. All right, Steve, you'll be seated tonight as a regular commission member, so stay close to that mute on mute button, okay?
No problem.
Yeah, appreciate it. You guys need the lights? We're good, don't worry about it.
As it gets dark, I'll get to it.
Okay, so let me get my agenda here so we can get going. All right, so first up is a review of the minutes for June 16, 2022. I know that we have myself, Diane Gersey, Brian Rogan, and Steve Biella, we're all here. The rest were excused or absent, so four of us here could make a decision on the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve, right, I think I've submitted. Thank you, Ms. Gersey, we have the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, second, we're Brian Rogan. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye?
Those opposed?
All right, thank you. Second up is the commission business, in accordance with the 824 for the Connecticut January 17th statute's review and recommendation of the matter of constructing a park on the point 29 acre town parcel located on the northeast side of Steel Boulevard.
Okay, so I'm going to present this, Jim Mahoney was not available. To give you a rundown, you may recall when you, when we looked at the Steel Boulevard proposal, there's a green area of land to the northeast corner of the Boulevard. It was a triangle. At the time of the subdivision, it was actually discussed who would be using it, how it would be used. When the subdivision was approved, it was noted during that meeting that it would be town land maintained by the town, public grounds or whatever. And we've been working on some concept plans for how to utilize that area. And there's this opportunity for the Small Town Economic Assistance Program grant. Applications are due, and the town would like to engage with Yantick River Consultants, which you guys may remember as Brandon Handfield, who's been working much with Steel Boulevard and has developed a preliminary concept plan to how to utilize the park. For a gathering area was envisioned, the concept being to host small public events, small, mid-sized public events, concerts, possibly farmer's market or food truck area, and enhance the walkability and public presence of that area. So the 824 is asking town council to allow the town manager to enter into the consulting contract with Yantick River Consultants to do the concept plans for this and apply for the grants. I do have pictures I can share.
So is this the area that has always been in the, like, the town?
Um, or an extension thereof, yes. I mean, it's not really the size most greens might be, but I believe it's .75 acres. I'll pull up the, 29. Oh, it's lot 75. That's where I had the 75 from, it's lot 75, Diane. So it's, this plan wasn't the best one that I pulled, but it's the first one I pulled. So here we have Steel Boulevard coming up and going towards the train station, and it's this area up in the corner. The manufacturing building is over here on the right, and it's this area. Do you have another share? Better plan? I have seven off plans, let me share them all. So you were talking, Brian, I think you asked about the cafe, and that's, I think, maybe the little building you were thinking of is in the, is across, would be on the west side of the Boulevard, that's part of the development by Newport.
Yes.
That's probably, that's what I'm seeing, you're thinking of, this is directly across from it, with a concept for perhaps a pavilion, a little plaza-type area, maybe some benches, some seats, et cetera. Again, it's just a concept at this point, but this is an 824 to the council.
Looks like they're going to be proposing some landscaping along the border to sort of block that parking lot, really adjacent to, adjacent property owner.
Yes, landscaping as well as.
Are they proposing any fencing along there?
Um, let me get the plan up, I just had it. We had two different concept plans, the one that was included was an earlier one than the last one I looked at, but yes, actually, the fence was, I believe, required as part of the overall development, I believe. It was, that fencing was discussed quite thoroughly to be, create an attractive barrier, but I think the somewhat, no, like, blend, so that the trees in front of it actually create the screen, and the same with the fencing along the, or rather, the trees and fencing along this northerly border, so that the fence is the feature, the fence is the barrier, the trees are the eye catcher. We moved, I believe, from one iteration, at least at the staff level, I'm not sure if it got to the commission level, was white vinyl, and that would be reflective and bold and bright and something a little more subdued, so the trees actually screened it.
Yeah, something would be important with that. If you had somebody who, right corner, it wouldn't be tempted to walk through the plantings.
I am having so much trouble getting the concept plan, and look, it says a concept plan right on it. It's labeled concept plan. There we go, and here's the plan, that is one of the, this iteration of the concept plan, there's another iteration where the pavement would be a little wider here to provide more of a market area, if there's power tents or food trucks or what have you.
And that little sidewalk is connected to another sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk further down, that goes along Steel Boulevard between the building at 10 Steel Boulevard and 9 Steel Boulevard.
Commission, questions?
The plan always was for this to be part of property that would receive as part of the project, I'm not remembering.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's why I brought up the discussion. So I do have the minutes of 2019 meeting where it was discussed that, let's see, that it was a park was going to be town land to be maintained by the town.
Steve Biella, I know that you're online, so if you have any questions.
I'm good right now, Joan, thank you.
So specifically with those minutes, Commissioner Gersey asked who would maintain a particular area of green on the site, I believe that's the best area you were discussing. Mr. Edge stated the Boulevard would be town-owned, and a portion of the site referenced by Commissioner Gersey would be mowed, plowed, and maintained by public works.
The concept, or the conceptual plan was fencing on two sides, aimed to exclude, deliberately exclude access, where the uses that you're talking about has, having, you would want to encourage more participation, and that's exactly.
So, so if I can explain from my conversations on the concept plan, the fencing along this border, the easterly border, is immediately adjacent to the manufacturing building. So it is to keep public from traversing to the, to the manufacturer's property. There is, there had been some discussion, I think they can come in around on the driveway area, that's at 10.
We've got 10 on the right side of the street.
10, Steel Boulevard, and so that's right at the edge of that, that it's really protecting their personal property, private property, and the other abuts to the railroad where we haven't secured any public access to it yet. There's been discussion as to whether that is feasible for any type of walking trail or what have you, and again, concept plans, so I think if you had that comment, you know, conceptually, or rather, with the 824 was moved favorably, you could have comments with relation to access as well.
So this little pavilion, 16 by 24, covered pavilion. And the patio area would be, if they had a function and they're a band or whatever, and they're, or anything, the patio area would be for chairs and stuff.
That, that is part of the concept of the patio, as well as the grass areas could be used for chairs, could be table, you know, type of, of landscape amenities that would allow for sitting, gathering blankets, as well as eating, and, but have a wide enough and big enough patio area for accessibility, so that people aren't necessarily tripping through along, they have some stable ground as well.
My idea would be that covered pavilion, more of a type of thing, maybe it's got to be slid forward a little bit, make it, you know, it's right through the lot line, so it's not just, set back lines. So it would cool a little bit forward, could be a little bit bigger, 35 feet.
And for access around it too, or just bigger, and still at blue lights?
It's wider.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, because you're saying screw it forwards.
You know, just screw it a little bit forward, and maybe, you know, the patio would go a little wider too, because the building's a little wider right now, it looks like the size of the building's patio. You know, it's not, it's not a big footage difference than whoever. So I think it's just something that, that, oh, public will use, and maybe it's a little aside, maybe a little more.
Yeah, even when you try to use the Zee Bowl or at the Betterment Park, it's too small, you can get the drummer in there, but you can't get the rest of the band.
Yeah.
So that would be, that would be a consideration.
I, I look at Sutton has that, the trail, open up, make it a bandstand, and stuff like that, and that's, you know, 35, 40 feet long, and, and they just get in that thing, you know, so.
And the only other thing that, I don't know, a comment I would have is that placement of that lamppost right at the end. I mean, I realize you need security, but, well, what we, on either side, I, I'm not sure how you're doing, but it's right in the middle of the patio. I'm the kind of person, I'd be walking around, I'd walk right into it.
So I, I do actually think that was discussed.
And that has to be a, we're putting only a post in the way, so.
Yeah, I have another concept plan that I had, but I'm not immediately finding it. Maybe I only have the print of it. But another iteration shows a wide, like I said, plaza area all along there. The lighting itself may already be installed and wired along there, I'm not sure if it is, we know that we've been working on the underground facilities there, so that, that may already be, however, there might be a way to, I don't know why it's up screen sharing.
I was wondering, looking at, I like the idea, but I have a question, consider the size of the parcel, the type of structure, if you want to move it forward, doesn't really fit. Would it be better off with just something more simplistic, where a park in the area for the residential apartments nearby, and the, what's the size?
Well, you know, the other thing too, is that, not even a third of them.
Great.
Yeah, the other thing too is that it's really going to depend upon, I'm sure that they'll be applying for grants or whatever, so.
Right, so, so that is, the crux of this is that it is, the 824 is for the town manager to enter into the consulting agreement for preparation of plan and specs for the Steel Boulevard Park, which also relates to the ability to apply for the grant, we need concept plans that are close to shovel-ready, we need concept plans that actually can come to fruition, because the state doesn't want to give money when something is down the road, they want to be able to know that it's being used.
Mr. Edge is here to talk to us.
I was just going to mention, it is purely conceptual right now, we, we really, basically what it is, is the state has told us there's two different pots of money, and we've been told they can be used on municipally-owned parcels, that's about it. I've gotten shot down twice, a SOD program, which you can tell by my voice, I'm happy about, it is. So this is one of municipal parcels we own, and the idea at this point, again, is to have them design something that will make sense for the community and for development. Right now, this is purely really just a, let them go and put it together, and because, again, we're in summertime, and the timeframe is pretty tight, we want to give them the ability to do this, and I think too, again, it's very early, the concept, I mean, literally, he's not going to go under contract to do stuff until this goes back to town manager and then council. So I think the comments can be taken, but I, I wouldn't want to go too deep into it, because it'll probably change dramatically. Again, we have to apply for it and then get the grant and go forward with it, because right now, we don't have the budget in the current, we don't have the money in our current budget, so, I mean, we think it's a great project, from what they've told us, it fits what they want, but again, until we can move forward, we have a certain amount of money set aside for, yeah, taking the branch, we've been doing a lot of great work for us as well, as we're, I appreciate the thought, and I don't want to go too, too deep on it, only because, again, it really is a concept to get started, you're really going to start working more in-depth on it.
Yeah, say 24, but we, you know, we looked at it, we're just bouncing back to other ideas to you, and just some concerns.
No, I just, I just reassure you guys that this, this is not.
Yeah, this is not the final product, but, you know, you kind of have to get, it's a catch-22, absolutely, you need to have some kind of plan, but you can, it should be a little plan, because now you have to make other plans, or go to the state with, and.
I also would like to note that I wrote down most of your comments, so that when we're having staff concept meetings, should it move forward, we can incorporate concerns and, and questions, and perhaps, so one of the concept plans did have pictures from other places to kind of show how this area works, or how this size band shell works, or what have you, and so they, then have that concept translated to another real-life situation, so that you have pictures for final development plans, we would have.
I think it's an idea, but I think also that council would, or something bigger, or attract people.
Yeah, I think she's got.
Simmons Berry's got that all covered up there.
Yeah, I know.
You know, look around there.
Just a quick comment, I could see where, you know, you're looking for that, that larger, I just don't know if that's the right area for it, and kind of like, keeping the intimacy there, you know, maybe you can't have a big band, but you can do something closed and closed, because I don't think the space would allow for a large amount of people to attend, but I think something smaller, a little bit more intimate, isn't bad if people are going to be in the apartments that have the space to use. I, I would just hate to see, I mean, again, keeping in mind that it's, you know, .29 acres, which is huge, but it's, it's nice and it's quaint, and I think if we, I mean, just my, like, keep it that quaint town feeling, I think, you know, it, it's in that.
It'll resonate better.
I know, it's just concept, but that's just my.
It's a good concept. Okay, all right, so it's an 824, so I, I think the council's looking for a lot of things, so, anyone who has a question? Okay, thank you, Tim, give a second, second by Sandy. All right, further discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Item B is the elimination of proposed, what? Oh, okay, elimination of proposed boundary fence shown to enclose parking lot of 55 Steel Boulevard on the approved Unified Steel Center Development Plan. And so what we have on that was.
I'm sorry, I was still writing.
No.
So, on the Steel Center, plan that we've been looking at here, and I'm, I don't have it here to pull up on this map, I have to find it, give me a second. They have the, the plan that was approved, I lost some documents today, they got moved into a different folder, I had to move a bunch back, and it was a problem. The, between 873 and 861 Steel Boulevard, Farmington Avenue, and the two buildings behind the new apartment buildings.
Yes.
The parking lot that was between them on the parking, on the apartment building site, has a fence proposed, that was proposed by the applicant to enclose that parking area, trying to secure it, but yet it would still be available, you know, but, but it was less of a, they, they just proposed enclosing. We are working on getting the liner, you remember that site is a Brownfield site, so the, the surface has to be lined and sealed before they can start construction over it. The location of the fencing causes permeation to the liner right up to the property lines. So the applicant, and the developer, Newport, has requested that they eliminate the fence that they proposed, it wasn't required, you know, it wasn't, as far as I'm aware, reviewing the, the record as best I could, I didn't find that it was something the commission required, it was something they proposed doing, but they want to eliminate that fence around the parking area. Give me a minute, and I'll find the plan, chose it, and, Mr. Valenti is here, if you want to hear from him with regard to the proposal to eliminate the fencing. He is sitting in the audience. It has to do with the liner itself. If you can hand them out, that's great, and I'm going to find your, you sent it to me anyway, right?
Commissioner Tony Valenti, Principal Realtor Group, 7 Main Street, Williamsville. So, sorry, there's two, two maps, they're both of the same, and you'll see in green where we highlighted where they just, the fence is proposed, and that was approved. Worry is correct, that the reason we need to remove that fence, not because we need or want to, it's because what's recommended, actually required by LaRrow Engineering, who is the consultant for the overall Brownfield, working on the property. We learned recently, based on grades, location of foundations, and how the liner has to be applied to that parcel, and basically a liner is going to be a several mil thick piece of plastic throughout, covering the entire side of 55 Steel Boulevard, that liner has to be brought right to the property line, at 873 Farmington Avenue, and also 861 Farmington Avenue, in that area is where the fence was going to be put. So LaRrow's recommendation slash requirement was, we, we don't want to do anything that will penetrate that, that liner in any way, or in any way, put holes in it, so environmental pieces was breached. You look back at the overall proposal, and we're two years ago, we're challenging ourselves, why even want to put a fence in that area anyway, especially as we see the buildings being built, the fence probably would make that small site seem even smaller, and we're all about trying to make that site walkable, drivable amongst all the buildings there. So, you know, our suggestion, and our request is with your approval is to remove that fence for, for those couple of key reasons.
Right, now, I'm not looking at the plan in front of me, but I will ask this question. Oh, okay.
I got it up.
So if, if we remove the fence, and that is parking for the buildings there, what will stop the public from parking there? In other words, like, you know, they want to run and get a coffee, oh, here's parking, and they pull in, and they park in the residence spots, I mean, is it going to be hosted somehow, or is that?
It, it is all general parking, that, that's, that's not, the only dedicated parking we're going to have on this site is going to be the parking underneath buildings, D and E, every, all the other parking is all public parking.
Okay, so that is the public.
It is, it is public lot, yeah, yeah. We, we think now, looking back at it, this site needs to be as open as it can be, vehicular and of course, probably more importantly, pedestrian traffic.
Do you think the guys will put like more trees or landscaping or something, or the fencing more of a bench?
We, we can't even put as much landscaping, specifically trees, because of that liner, that the trees will also penetrate that liner. We're kind of learning as we're going on this stuff.
That's kind of a shame.
Yeah, yeah. And if that liner didn't have to go right to the property line, it would give us some flexibility, see, we had six feet between liner and property line, of course, we would do some cool landscaping, so.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
Some nice landscaping, yeah, but we can't because of.
I'm wondering if we can.
We're going to, we're going to curb it, of course, we're going to curb eight stone, just for the tires out.
We're continuing our planters with shrubs. enormous planters with shrubs. They're going to be very creative up here.
Well, we just have to be careful from an economic perspective, we're going from a white vinyl, six-foot white vinyl fence, which is not terribly expensive, has a great appeal, now to some plantings that are going to require not only, you know, purchase and installation, but also ongoing maintenance. Connecticut, we've got a tough winter, there's just a lot, we've done those planters before with all due respect, and, and the maintenance of them is probably more than we want to think on.
Yeah.
So good, good thoughts and ideas, but we also have to keep the economic peace in mind too. So good, good thoughts and ideas, but we also have to keep the, the economic peace in mind too.
Is there anything you could do to improve the parents of it?
Again, this like.
Your economics and restrictions as far as that.
I think we're two, two feet, and then there's a variety of different kinds of materials that have to be placed on top of the, on top of the liner, it's way more technical than. And again, as we see the site coming together, if y'all went out there with nine, nine steel under construction, just about done with, and we see this site being pretty darn tight, we don't want to do anything to cause any barrier between the buildings, the parking, et cetera. We want, we want everything to flow, you know, we're sitting on four acres with, you know, over a hundred thousand square feet of development. So we're, we're pretty, we're pretty dense here, it looks nice. Appreciate that, appreciate that.
And you're doing a great job.
Yeah, so let me ask you a question. The buildings that are adjacent to the fencing that you need to have taken down on the parking, what is that, it's going to be south?
Yeah, that, that line, that's, that's going to border eight seventy-three Farmington Avenue.
Is there a dumpster there right outside of that, yeah, right there, worrying, is that a dumpster here where?
Um, this, so this plan, you might recall, was the settlement plan, um, is not shown on this version. This is the way, um, it exists now, this is what we commonly call Joel's. This is the eight seventy-three building, this is the eight sixty-one building. This site here, all inclusive of eight sixty-one and eight seventy-three, has been improved. They've changed their driveway with a, a single curb cut out here that eventually when Kokomo, who owns this, moves to put on the addition that was approved for this site, um, all their parking will be behind and there'll be substantially a building all along the frontage.
Okay.
Here and landscaping in front here.
Okay, so where you were showing that building, right there.
Yeah, right there.
All right, if you just go, is that a dumpster?
This is, but it won't be, this is all parking on the new plan, I'm sorry, I wavered from answering the question. This is all parking for the new, um,
So that's.
Agreement plan, the agreed upon plan, and then he has just, um, I think there was a dumpster location just in this area, if I remember that plan correctly.
So this was, this was just a fence bordering.
Between two properties.
Yeah, two different parking lots.
Yes. A great change as well.
And a great change.
And the only reason, the, the only way to access that parking area that is fenced is from that up here.
That's correct.
So there's only one way in and one way out.
Out, you also could go into it from through the garage, the garage.
I'm not worried about the garage, I'm just worried about the street, so if somebody comes off of the boulevard to go to that parking area.
They come in from the boulevard, they turn left after the little building that Commissioner Rogan was talking about earlier, and they can go this way through the parking lot and back out that same way. This from off Farmington Avenue is one way in per the state's requirement. So even Joel's who has parking behind will be going out to the left and back to the boulevard. Is that, that's still correct, correct? Yeah, that is still correct, DOT changed things a couple of times on me, on everyone. Yeah. And it'll create a much nicer, as you've already reviewed, a much nicer streetscape all through here because now in front of eight sixty-one is green, in front of eight seventy-three will become green, and this is patio and, and green in front of ten Steel Boulevard.
That's nine.
Nine.
Okay.
Tried.
So we need to eliminate the fence, and obviously we have to do it because you're in a position where you can't put the fence. But would you consider putting a stamped wall that would delineate the line between your property and Kokomo's property? Small stamped walls, but doesn't have to be a real stone wall. Concrete stamps that look like, they look like they're a stone wall.
What's the ultimate position change there?
It's one, one and a half, ten feet, it's, it's, it's a decent, it's a decent change. We have to go back to economics on removing a fence and spending, you know, X number of dollars for wealth, and I'm not sure, we're not sure it has, has a ton of value to our, to our guests and to our guests. Get to our guests and to our tenants, I've got to really challenge that.
Um, I also want to add that there is, um, uh, I'm not sure whether it's actually, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure you understood my thought, my thought was not to have the entire thing wall, but just that little strip there.
This one?
Yeah.
That's, that's not a strip. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a, um, I don't have a scale, the scale.
Thirteen parking spaces, so. Um, but my comment on that was going to be that the parking plan that was agreed upon for eight sixty-one and eight seventy-three includes an easement for the parking of eight seventy-three and eight sixty-one to actually go into that land a little bit, so I'm not sure there's, I don't know what the space between the front to front parking spaces will be.
That's a great point.
I'm not sure there's much there.
That line all, all the way to eight sixty-one, so.
There is the stop, yeah.
There's an easement that the town is actually granting to Newport Realty for eight sixty-one and also granting to the owner of eight seventy-three Farmington Avenue. To move their property line a little bit further to the north to permit parking along that, that northern, northern boundary. Again, also, so that kind of squeezes that boundary, you know, even tighter than. If there was something logical and feasible to put there to make it look nice, of course we agree to everything thus far, we just, we're just really tight in that area.
Yeah.
Really tight.
And that's kind of why the fence can't go off the parking spaces because the parking spaces from the other side actually cross the part, cross the property line to create where, where the liner is.
Yeah.
You're not, the improvements aren't stopping at the property lines, the improvements are crossing the property lines.
Once we, once we convey the property, once we convey the property, then that'll be our easement to ourselves basically, and then our easement to. Just, just a little more clarification.
We, we know that you're doing a great job over there, it's just that we try to see if you can bring to light to share our ideas with you, I mean, obviously. There's so much you can do with it, I mean, kind of in the pickle over here, so.
So, I, yeah, I don't know, I mean, funds can't go in, just not, can't do it because of the liner, and then honestly, as I see it, probably vinyl fence really wouldn't be that aesthetically pleasing anyways. So, but I mean, like, we're just, like, Chairwoman really was saying, we're just kind of kicking some cans down the road, see what you could possibly do, even if it was just like, is that, if that's going to be a grass area, maybe throw some like tiger grasses in it, they don't go that deep and they get a little bit of, of color to the area. But yeah, other than that, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, so I'll make the motion to approve the elimination of the town unit.
Okay, we have the motion by Mr. Rock, and do we have a second? Second, second by Mr. R.C., further discussion on this line, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for joining in. And you know, it's a tough spot you're in, we appreciate that, and I think.
So important.
Yeah, it is, it's very important.
We're excited, we'll, we'll have nine steel open middle of August, we're, we're basically leased up with our apartments, we've got half house, if you want to quick up, we've got a half house, we'll take half of the first for putting the patio at nine steel, we're in negotiations for the twenty-nine steel, the small sixteen acre worth of building, and interest continues for enhanced here, so we're, we're jumping on, we'll be planning, building pretty quick. Both of the buildings, including the foundation, are in the.
There's no more.
I want to make sure I get some more invitations first. All right, on to the public hearing, sorry, do we have, do we have a call, this would be for public hearings?
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing Notice, the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at its regular meeting on Thursday, July seventh, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. in the Town Council Chamber, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. A, for promise revised amendment of the zoning regulations, Attorney Dennis Sanneva on behalf of Red Leash LLC, six inch three special permit uses self-storage facilities, propose the proposed amendment to section nine A six C, signs permitted in all districts with assigned permit. Jeffrey D. Pednho, Director of Operations of Berlin Public Schools, C special permit slash site plan applications of five 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 Weather Steel LLC for interior renovations to existing buildings to relocate commercial construction business five 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 Weather Steel Road. The applications and related material are available at the City Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Day this twenty-second day of June at Berlin, Connecticut, Brian Rubin, Secretary, Planning and Zoning Commission, New Burton Herald, classified advertising slash legal notices, data publication, Saturday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and Monday, July fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, thank you, Brian. Okay, so the first item is the proposed revised amendment to the zoning regulations, Attorney Dennis Sanneva on behalf of Red Leash, Red Leash, Leash LLC, six eight three special permit use self-storage facilities. This is continuing from May nineteenth, June second, and June nineteenth. Okay, good evening, how are you today?
I'm good, thank you, Chairperson, members of the commission, Adam Planner, for the record, my name is Dennis Sanneva, I'm an attorney of the Sanneva Law Firm, seven twenty-one Broad Street in Meriden, and as you, your record points out, we were here back on May nineteenth, made most of the formal presentation, we're happy to make as much presentation again if the commission thinks that necessary. I was looking at your minutes of the May nineteenth meeting, and I thought it captured pretty well what we presented. J.R. Klisham, my client is here with me, Jim's contractor engineer is on your screen, your TV screen. You may remember last time when we made the presentation, it was to allow self-storage facilities under a special permit use in the Berlin Turnpike zone to the zone. And after we made our presentation, there were some concerns that were expressed by the commission. I know that Commissioner Ziegman wanted to know what pertaining properties would be affected by this proposed amendment, so he was concerned to avoid spot zoning, legitimate concern, there were other issues that were raised, and I think Maureen had indicated back in May nineteenth that she would submit a map showing some of the available property review requirements. Since that time, I've had additional conversations with your staff, Economic Development and Economic Development Commission, which had recommended, which had supported our petition, had another meeting apparently, and came back with some revisions, we've incorporated those revisions in what we're doing today. So what we did is, we, as we submitted this, and that's why, by the way, the, the public hearings had to be continued so we'd get the proper notice out, wanted to make sure that we were here properly. And so the changes were to reduce the minimum lot area to three acres, we had initially drafted with a seven acre minimum that did limit it to, I think, one property, possibly two, Chris can talk to that, I'm sure. Uh, and now with the three acre minimum, there are, as I understand, at least three parcels without assembling parcels that would be eligible for this, but probably only two of them would be even reasonably considered as, as applying for this type of use. The other, the other change was to decrease the linear frontage from six hundred and fifty feet to four hundred and fifty feet, so again, it was designed to make sure that there wasn't a spot zoning issue, that there are other properties eligible for this type of use. When we made the presentation, one of the things I think Commissioner Rogan talked about, like the fact that we had suggested some distances, some substantial distances to the rear property line, that there would be some distance between any of these types of developments where this zone only has a fifty foot rear yard setback, we had suggested a ninety foot rear setback, so that again, with this development, it would not have, we were trying to minimize any potential impact on, on the residentially zone properties to the rear of the site. So that was, that was a factor that I thought was appropriately understood and considered. Again, Madam Chairperson, we're happy to make the presentation, we've got boards to show you the sort of architectural features we've suggested. I think you know that you have your Berlin Turnpike architectural guidelines, this would be subject to those. That's why again, in the draft regulation, we talked about either a tower or some other architectural components. Again, some of that language came from economic development, which has been incorporated in our revised plan. The idea, as we mentioned back in May nineteenth, of these old concrete, you know, mice, mice-ridden buildings is archaic, thankfully, they've changed, and they're now really air-conditioned, attractive units. You know, as we suggest in this regulation, no garage doors would face the Berlin Turnpike. All designed to make sure that, and special permits, so first it comes back to you and you have tremendous discretion in approving an application or denying an application based upon the relevant factors, so we tried to draft language that gave a great deference to the commission, make sure that as a site came into you, you wanted to make sure that it worked for the town. In terms of need, I think J.R. provided evidence last time, and again, he can speak tonight if he so desired, about the need in Berlin for this type of use, that if you look both statewide and nationally, the sort of square footage that's required or generally required in a community, Berlin was well below the percentage of, of square footage of these self-storage facilities that are generally available to, to residents, and again, I think in my discussions with your economic development director, apparently there's been some four hundred apartments or so approved, and many times they become wonderful users of this type of facility, they can store their goods. And I, I think at this point, I just want to defer to Chris, because I think he's, we've worked with him and Maureen to try to come up with something that
You have the architectures here?
We do.
All right, can we just revisit them, just for a fresh? Seeing that you brought them all the way here, we ought to let the commission just see them again.
So.
J.R., I feel like J.R. can speak to what you've done, and we're, I mean, this is not just some, some concept, it's more things that actually build in the past.
Okay.
Good evening, J.R. Klisham.
And I actually moved that so that maybe it can appear on the screen a little better.
Thank you for your time again tonight, my name is J.R. Klisham.
Yes, I can see it.
The principal and owner of CT Self-Store, we've built fourteen-story facilities in Connecticut over the years, and what this concept shows right here is what we sort of try to do, is putting our, you know, our best foot forward with a nice streetscape. What Dennis calls a tower typically for us, that's a two-story structure with the, the top story of that is really just unconditioned attic space, which gives the building, we try to give it a more of an office look from the street. And we use mostly, you know, glass, hardy plank, sometimes we use some CMU block at the bottom. You know, landscaping around the front, and you know, we do have a larger site in the back, but we try to make that front entrance as appealing as we can. This property that we're looking at in particular lends itself to our use, I think, because of the topography, and it's really one where you're just going to see the front of our project, once you're inside the project, different story, you know, it's a, it's a storage facility, we will, we will have roll-up doors, but they won't be visible from the street. visible from the street because of the way it slopes down. And we plan to put a fence in our harbor vibes, covering the length of the building. Really, of, of the projects, of the projects that we've done, this one, I call it the amateur to the street, probably has the smallest one, even though we have a lot of frontage. Really, what would be visible from the street would be the part that is probably considered most appealing to the public. Just a nice landscaped hill, two-story structure, glass, hardy plank, windows, light, landscaping. And once you're inside, it's more of a utilitarian site that can be used by the public. But certainly from the, the streetscape and from the road, it's going to be a nice addition to where we run, where we want to be, and where we are on the Berlin Turnpike.
So, so I'm going to go and rent one of these storage things from you. So I come and visit you.
You come pull. Yeah, you come and pull. And there's going to be, we're showing seven parking spaces or seven or nine parking spaces. You pull into one of those parking spaces, there'll be a manager inside the office, maybe two, depending. We have, we sort of have one and a half employees. There's, you know, some clerical work that has to be done, but we're, from nine to six, Monday through Saturday, somebody will be at that store. We know in that store on Sunday, you have, you know, access to the office. Then, not even visible from the road, will be a gate on the other side of the office. So to get into the project or into the facility, you have to enter a code and a keypad. That lets you in. And then there'll be two driveways. You go down about two hundred and fifty feet, I believe, and you go to another grade, and then come back up and around. So it's very simple loop with inside the property.
Yeah.
And on that loop, you get access both drive-up doors for your classic red and butter self-storage facility, roll-up, which is still the king, the most popular by far. And also, much a bit more expensive, but climate-controlled self-storage, which would be access for personnel doors on that driveway loop. And that would be, we keep our climate control from about fifty degrees to about eighty degrees year-round.
So not all of them are climate?
No, not all of them. Usually, typically, we have about a sixty-fourty split, sixty percent climate control, one percent drive-up. And you know, just what I mentioned, I had my right up there before, but I think, you know, for this property right here, I know that not a lot, but none of this property over time, I know it's a tough property. I know there's, even just the material, the material on the property is tough. Maybe our engineer, Jim Secant, should speak to that a little bit more. We've dealt with tough sites before, and one of the luxuries that we have, I think, is we can, we can change the configuration of our site to really work with the land. Here, the property, it, it rises up from the street, but then also it falls away in the back, down into a wetland area. And we can keep a buffer from the wetland, keep a buffer from the home behind us, still utilize a good, decent chunk of the property. And, you know, it, it, it works for us. I don't know, I'm not an expert in other uses, but I think it's been a difficult site for people to work with it, which is why it's remained empty for a long time.
I have some thoughts. I had seen the two-story office business being reasonable. I just don't like the terminology of towers, that I think that really lends itself to something else.
It's really, I mean, yeah, it's two-story. It's really, what it really is, it's unconditioned attic space. It's a, it's just there for looks only. It gives a little bit of structure and scale and size on the street.
I just don't think that fits the definition of a tower when you talk of one. So hearing tower, that's really lends my mind to go somewhere else.
Game of Thrones, huh?
Very tall structure. I don't really consider it two-story, you know, to fit that terminology. Also, as far as the air conditioning, they're going to be on top. I would like to see something that, you know, would ensure that there's screen.
What do you mean, mechanicals?
Yeah, mechanicals.
We try to put our condensers on the sides of the building. Again, we have some flexibility that this project would have. You'd be, have to go, you would have two grades of access. So on that radius going down, we'll probably have some room in which we can put our split system, our, our condensers would be on the outside, our furnaces on the inside. So we could, we could remain, and just, just for your information, we, I don't like putting stuff on the roof. I don't want to penetrate the roof. The, the one thing that this has is the best roof you could possibly, a standing seat roof is the best roof you can, you can possibly have, and we don't want to put too many holes. So.
And I'm just, keep in mind, when I'm considering these texts, I'm not just considering your project, I'm looking at this for further expansion of other people who might be looking to do a self-storage facility, which is why I'm bringing up these concerns. And the only other thing that really sticks out to me, I do like the ninety-foot setback, but I would like to see more text in there that says that that setback be, have, be buffered by landscaping or have substantial natural buffering between that and the residential. Because otherwise, you know, ninety-foot lawn doesn't really do much.
I think we would do, I think on this, we had a little bit of both, part of that, part of our property, I believe, is a wetland within that ninety feet, but other, other is not. So we have, we can landscape that section.
Yeah, but to, but to Brian's point, because this is, this is a discussion about amendment to the zoning regulations. So that's why, you know, we're not going to talk site specific.
Right.
All right. Anyone else with questions or concerns standing?
Yeah, just a, a couple of ones, again, looking at strictly from the, from the text amendments. I, I mean, I would agree with Commissioner Rubin as far as putting in the text amendment, you know, a tower, similar components. I mean, I think if, if there's in there, you know, use has an architectural feature based in the Berlin Turnpike, I think keeping it more controlled might be a little bit better for a text amendment itself. I was also looking at the ninety feet from any embodied residential property, zone property. I think that's, that's perfect. I know during the discussions, they kept mentioning that it was the rear setback, but the way I'm looking at this, this would be on all three sides, aside from the, you know, four fifty setback on the frontage. As far as the buffering on that, I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I'm not sure if it should go in the text amendment, or if that's something that, and Maureen, maybe you can explain a little bit better how that would work. I mean, all of these would still have to come before planning and zoning for special permit, and maybe that's where some of the architectural and planning could be addressed. I'm just not sure if it's, if it shouldn't be a text amendment or not. That's, I'm not sure of.
So to answer that question quickly, the commission has the discussion to add criteria in the special permit language for any specific use. So if you feel, you know, this particular use may warrant having buffering or landscaping, screening, that was the word I used as you guys were talking, added to the language here, that's perfectly acceptable, or you can rely on the special permit criteria. And what I wanted to note in response to that with the buildings as well, is perhaps consistency with the Berlin Turnpike design guidelines for architecture is another, because you do have that tool that addresses building style. One, one criteria is walls of buildings facing the Berlin Turnpike should include windows, display areas, or other features to diminish the appearance of a blank wall. And the second of that section has a bunch of bullet points, but is buildings of significant mass or scale that are sighted a lot, frontages should incorporate changes in the facade such as offsets, jogs, and changes in relief, such as cornices, fenestration, or fluted masonry. So these are, you know, other ways to say tower or other architectural feature peaks, you know. So I, you can, you can modify this language within reason. The reason we recommended that the language, the revision that happened to the language already be re-noticed was because it was significant. You can make that kind of modifications and tweaks, but it substantially changed it with a lot of size and frontage changing because it changed what properties could, would, would, could be considered if nothing changes, if they didn't compile properties. And so that was a significant change in the language.
I do like that idea. I think they, you know, that it has an architectural feature consistent with Berlin Turnpike architectural design, or, you know, that, that proper word. I do like how that is.
The other question I have is that on this particular thing that we're looking at, I'm talking about, you know, the second story, the tower, not so much, but an architectural feature. If, if that second story is not going to be used, does it have to be a second story? It could be, because almost, I'm getting the impression, you know, what's being, and see, this is where I get hung up, because we're looking at a text amendment, not a site. But we're looking at pretty pictures. So looking at a pretty picture of this proposal that is sort of in conjunction with, so that's off coming. So if there's no workable space up there, does it have to be two stories?
So we, we, we found that it's easiest to build a, really, a two-story building, but just don't pour a concrete floor, that deck pan up there, just by, maybe Jim can speak more to that, you know, to support the wind load and things like that, the building has to have, rather than just building very tall walls like that, so you get it some, that, that second deck pan or floor, which you would normally pour concrete on.
Yeah.
It gives, gives it some rigidity and twist and sway. It's, I think, more of a structural thing, but Jim can speak to that a little bit more. It's just easier to build it like that.
I, I think the question really is still the whole building. You're not asking just about.
I'm just asking about the tower. I'll call it the tower for that sake. But does it have to be, I mean, could it, if, if, if there's no purpose to it, if there's no use to it, now I don't know if you're going to store boxes up there, or file cabinets, or whatever. I, I, I'm not sure. But does it have to be a two-story? Could you just go with like one and a half?
You can make it taller, for, you can make it a taller single story.
Oh, I don't, I don't want it to be taller.
No, you can give it a taller, a, a, a taller, single-story section, I guess you could do that.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that. Talking about.
I'm just thinking about surrounding.
Square looking at that building there, which is, looks like a tower. And you have to have a flat roof on it. It's going to be a hip roof on it, and the story and a half with a hip roof on it.
Yeah, just like the last gentleman was talking about, you could put a hip roof over that tower probably, but on that small section facing the street, that, that would be doable.
Yeah.
Something.
If you're not using the second floor, I mean, maybe able to cut that second floor lower and put a hip roof. You know, and that, and that's, that's more architectural than a square box and a flat roof.
You can do that.
Steve, did you have anything? Steve Biella, did you have any comments or questions for the applicant regarding this proposal to the amendment to the text?
No, I got nothing right now. Thank you.
You said no, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? I know that this is a public hearing, so let me turn to the public now. If there's anyone who would like to address, we have a taker here. On organs. Okay. Mr. Edge, good evening.
Good evening. Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road. Yes, we've worked very closely with the applicant on finding language that can work for this. The concern was, one, if it's written so narrowly, do we look at it as well as spot zoning? I think the BT two is the location to put this, if it's going to be anywhere, because it's a limited zone where it's located, down by the Meriden border. These are properties, at least two of the three are currently undeveloped, and likely are not going to be developed in any commercial way, just the nature of the turnpike. Down that far, there's not a lot of interest in development. These properties have been, one has been on the market for the entirety of the seven and a half years I've been here. The other one has not actively been on the market, but I know the owner has been trying to do so. So these two properties, I think, are a good spot for it. To follow Attorney Sanneva's thoughts, yes. As I'm learning from some of my compatriots in other communities, self-storage follows apartments. So once you approve the apartments, self-storage guys call. And there's been a lot. They're very interested. I know that we are underserved from self-storage perspective, from where the, Jeremy, this is wrong, but market statistics say there should be X amount of square footage per cabin. We're very much below that at this point, especially with the apartments coming in. I think this is a use that can be tax generating. I think, and is it a big traffic generator? No. But at the same time, it's going to take a couple of properties and make them developed. I think if we have this area, and only this area, we will get a limited amount. We will not see a plethora of them, which I know is always, again, the unintended consequences. And I think we can get some quality developments as well through the special permit process. To go back to the second story, I think the reason for that was, is to kind of break up these single-story long buildings. I know that, I grew up in Plainfield, they had done a project right on, we're saving the Ritten Road, that may not be the right address, but not that far from the theater. And it's the same type of thing. It's got a lot of landscaping, and really, that second story, even though it's not usable, breaks up the really long building.
I know.
And I think that was really the fire. I don't think it was necessarily a, we must, but I think it was something, try to kind of break it up more than anything else. I do appreciate the fact that they've worked very closely, because I think this is something that we, we don't take action, if this commission doesn't take action tonight, I think the self-storage calls will continue. And we are going to have to find a spot for it somewhere. I think this is the best scenario for us. We will get a couple of properties developed. There will be taxes. We will also have an opportunity, again. I think there's a lot of empty nesters right now that might potentially move into our new apartments, want to downsize and not keep their stuff. It's a good place for them. I think it's tremendous for the apartment dwellers, because even though they have lots of college debt, a lot of them have skis and bikes and jet skis and the rest of it, they can't put them in the park. So I think having it here would be good. And we've been in favor of it from our commission, and I think we'll be closely with them to find a, find a middle ground, which is, we're going to get a couple, but not tons, because we also don't want to see tons, because we don't want to see it especially, for instance, put in the BT one zone. The BT one zone is probably two-thirds of the turnpike. You'd have some very valuable land that would be used for a less than wonderful overall use. Where these parcels are, as far down as they are, I think it makes a lot of sense. But we're definitely in favor of it. And I think the, how much the applicant and Attorney Sanneva, the work with the commission, I think, says a lot about the fact that they want to make this work as well, and, and will be very flexible with this commission, and, and bring a good product to bear. I mean, I think when we look at it, that's really what we're all looking.
Yeah.
It's not just the taxes, because you can get taxes on a building too. You want something that's going to be pleasing, and something that is, again, they, they want to be part of the community, which is why they're here today.
I, I think that, that's well, well taken. And I think that, you know, as far as my concerns go, just in general, with self-storage, is that you do that, want them to be safe and secure, and you don't want them to get gangly over the years. And also, at, at one time, they did have a stigma that kind of followed through with them. And so, you know, we have to sort of, we think that. But to your point, yeah, there are some, some parcels that would probably be best served. My biggest concern, because of the, because of the turnpike, and the turnpike goes adjacent to a lot of neighborhoods right away, it's, it's the whole thing of just making sure we, we do as minimal impact on neighborhoods possible. But let me swing back to the applicant and ask them if I can. Obviously, you're going to have cameras and security that goes along with all of that. Again, I mean, it should be part of the special permit. We should take a look at security. I know that they had that break-in, what was it, on the Berlin Turnpike, the self-storage, that unit, metal lane in the Berlin Turnpike, behind the auto body. They had, there was self-storage, there was very low key, but somebody went in there and broke into all these units and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm hoping that security cameras will be part of the process, obviously, personal security, people going down there and, you know, getting their stuff on or not.
We have all of our places that we built have ample security cameras inside out, good, good lighting as well. And we also just have, without, I'm getting too specific, but there are ways, it's so simple, as requiring people to use disc locks versus your typical pass block that can be snipped. It can't be snipped like that. They'll go to, it's too hard to break in.
Yeah.
So the little things, we, we, we require that. So there's things you could do to really cut down on, we haven't had a break-in in a very long time.
I just want to make sure that that becomes part of the special permit.
And if I may also, a, a good rule to have, and that is also just, we limit your hours of operations. And, if I may also, a, a good rule to have, and that is also just, we limit your hours of operations, six a.m. to 10 p.m., we're closed at night.
Yeah, I, I'll be honest with you, as a gal, I would not go down to a self-storage area, obviously after six o'clock, and, I mean, anything after dark or whatever, only just because, I mean, it's, it's just personal safety, sometimes you just don't assume.
I personally like the, the, uh, development of what I've seen you, that you've done, uh, you know, not one or two, uh, you know, I was, I was the storage war guy before storage war came out, you know, so, so I've been through a lot of facilities, um, and, uh, a facility like this is a total upgrade, guys, that I see, is not, I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else in the public that, anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission regarding this application? And then I'll switch over to our town planner to see what input you have. Go ahead, Laurence.
So, I just want to, I believe these were handed out at one of the other public hearings, but you had asked for maps showing the, um, potential lots and lot sizes as they related to, um, the initial text.
Yes.
Um, what we did here was, we put the acreage along this section of the Berlin Turnpike, which is the south end of the Berlin Turnpike BT2 zone, um, which is one of the two areas in which we have the BT2 zone. Um, so, we have just a couple of par, parcels that are currently, or a few parcels that are currently over the three acres, um, that was one of the questions, and then the other section, okay. No, we had a map that showed that as well, and I was not able to find it today, if you give me one second, I can bring that up, uh, with the frontages, as soon as I move everybody out of my way. Do you have that map? Chris, is that what you're doing? Because you did a frontage map as well.
The vacant property, the vacant person, it's seven and a half acres, and the three and a half acres that are just south of Best Western, the three persons are fit for the criteria, the size of the frontage.
And then the other is, let me get back to what I'm sharing, hold on, that's what she's talking about. Get out of my way again. Other map is up, uh, Long Demme Road, we have a BT2 zone as well, across from Brickyard Plaza, um, the Top Hat Cleaners is in the plaza that's there, and then there's a couple of the manufacturing buildings, a couple of them have changed over to BT2 uses, there's a baseball equipment there as well, the, obviously, none of those meet the three acres, um, and, but there would be the possibility for compiling parcels, which I always like to keep in mind, because if you have older buildings, sometimes they get compiled. Um, so, those are the, the response to, um, the questions asked by the commission, again, this is what's at the south end of the turnpike. Um, should you decide to, um, move forward with language and any modifications to it, I, just before, you make that, you know, move on to the next thing that we narrow down, how we're changing it, so we can post it.
Okay.
And I had those couple, so what I, actually, let me, to wrap up, what I put so far was, um, for, and two, the building developed for this use has an architectural feature consistent with the Berlin Turnpike design guidelines, instead of the rest of the sentence, and the other was, the property so developed, number five, the property so developed maintains a minimum setback of 90 feet with landscape screening from any abutting residentially developed or residentially zoned property, I don't love the sentence, but I couldn't figure out a better way to do it on the fly.
And it's a, it's a minimum setback with 90 feet, right?
Yes, maintains a minimum setback of 90 feet from any abutting residentially developed or residentially zoned property, and I just added the "with landscape screening," screening right after the 90s.
Except, except for that would be if they have a substantial natural buffer.
So, um, with natural screening?
Landscapes are natural.
Landscape or natural, landscape screening.
I think it's just most important, it's just the, just to make sure we get, because if you've got residential there, you don't want that to, are...
Thinking back about the mechanicals, um, I wouldn't mind some language to say mechanicals visible from the turnpike or abutting residential properties, screen.
And posting the vows. And the height.
So, yes, the height restriction for the zone would always apply the site plan and, um, and regular parking and landscaping, and, um, buffering, those kinds of criteria on, uh, but whether or not they specifically address the concerns of this type of use, is where, in the special permit criteria for the use, you would make it more restrictive than what the regulations call for, or less.
Again, the reason for that is for the adjacent neighborhood, so that somebody doesn't get up to give them pay for it. Straight up.
Let me just, the BT2 zone has a maximum height of four stories, or 35.
Four stories. Oh, no, I know that, it says four stories or, right, 35, but it should be at the, I think it should be, I don't know. It's, it's gotta take in the adjacent neighborhood, you've gotta... Well, well, on the special permit side, as long as they know it's gonna be addressed to the special permit side. You see what else? Because the, the, I mean, four stories is what, what you feel. So, you've been cut off by the 35, what I'm saying is that if you've got something that's very close to residential, you maybe don't want it to go up that high, so it's gotta be, it's gotta be something that's gonna be... Yeah.
I might, sure, Chris.
Sure.
Just wanted to help, but, talking about my claim, he would certainly not be opposed to a two-story maximum for this type of building, with that, if that's something that you'd wanna consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would that be incorporated, can we incorporate that into the, for that specific usage? Two-story. So, or just want it all with the text around.
Yep. I further change, and two, the building developed for this use had, is, has a maximum of two stories, and architectural features consistent with the Berlin Turnpike design guidelines. And then, the, for five, I tweaked that a little bit more, the property so developed maintains a minimum setback of 90 feet with landscape screening or buffer acceptable to the commission from any abutting residentially developed or residentially zoned property, and then I added seven mechanicals visible from the Berlin Turnpike or residential properties be screened.
And you have to put anything for hours of operation?
Um...
Or is that just something?
I think you can do that, I believe you can do that during the special permit.
All right, that's fine.
Um, and I would also see, you're actually closing the hearing, and then you've got a...
Go ahead. Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, and second, on this choice, for the discussion, and all those in favor, aye? Steve Biella?
Aye, I'm sorry, uh...
You gotta stay with us, Steve. I miss you being here, Steve, you gotta start coming in, again. All right, um, so, anyone close, no, someone, all right, next is the proposed amendment to section 9A6C, signed permit, in all districts with a signed permit, Jeffrey B. Kugno, Director of Operations for Public Schools. And, there we go. Good evening, thank you for your patience.
Evening, members of the commission. My name is Jeff Kugno, uh, I'm here on behalf of the Berlin Public School District, uh, where I work as Director of Operations. I'm also a Kensington resident, and live at Chatham Road, the superintendent of schools asked me to assist him a while back in developing some new signage, um, logos, et cetera, for the school facilities. We have six full facilities in town, uh, this amendment is not appropriate for all of them, but at least three of them. So, in developing those schools, we have superintendent concerned, because we have a very mismatched type of identity for our school facilities, of course, they've been built different times, and they have different structures and things of that nature, but we wanted to have something in the front of the buildings that identified them as part of the Berlin School District, uh, that had some of the same flair that we'll show a little bit about today, although I know a text amendment doesn't have to do with anything particular, but just so you know what the superintendent had in mind, um, and we've got some prototypes that we can look at. Uh, working with a local sign company, we developed prototypes, they say, uh, with some identification signs to be placed on the sites, three of them would be freestanding in front of the sites, and that's what this amendment is addressing, uh, there's a couple more buildings that would have something for on that, the buildings themselves, and that, as in this case. I visited with Maureen, uh, back to review the regulations, when in fact, we did have a couple prototypes to see what was reasonable from the town standpoint, um, after some pretty good discussion on a lot of things, it was decided that we needed either a variance or a text change, to get the approval to have what we wanted to have, the size we wanted to have, put in front of the buildings. Um, ultimately, in the discussions, uh, it was decided on an application for a text amendment, so that's what you have here this evening. Um, the text amendment, second. Text amendment is a pretty simple one, um, I don't know if they have the memorizing in the program that Maureen, or...
Yeah, they do, but I'll share it as well.
Literally tried to make it as simple as possible, I know the text changes are, are, uh, interesting in any planning and zoning commission, uh, this one is pretty, pretty direct on what it, what it asked for, and where we're applying, uh, application, we're proposing. I'll read it in the record if you like.
Well, I'll just clarify if I can, um, this is, the text amendment is to add the underlying language on to the sentence, uh, and paragraph as it exists, so the language in front of and after the underline is how the regulation currently reads, and it would be adding this language, the proposal is to add this language.
What it allows, this text amendment is addressing is just a little bit larger sign than what is allowed in a residential zone. Our schools are in residential zones, your regulations offer a four-square-foot sign in order, with something that would even be able to see very well in the front of our very large facilities, which have large fronts and parking lots and things of that nature, and plant areas, we want to do at least something that is, is, uh, is, what we have is our prototypes, not 36 square foot, uh, excuse me, 18 square foot area.
I was gonna say 36.
18 split, uh, which is basically the size of some of the signs that you have in commercial areas and so, and so forth. We're not trying to compare our schools to the commercial areas by any means, but, um, they are rather large structures, with all of them, the ones we're talking about, have huge lots in front, big parking lots, and we wanna have an identification signs, ones that have logos on them and things of that nature. I think there was, what was developed, uh, agreed upon, uh, with, developed by Vital Science and Graphics, and, uh, agreed upon by the superintendent anyways, is what we're trying to do, or realistically, from the text amendment standpoint, knowing that it's needed, is a really larger sign. Buildings, uh, good, I, I, I know that Maureen has, and, I don't know, if you're gonna bring them up, Maureen, or you wanna bring them up now, so?
Working on it, I'm bringing the map back, please, Steve.
All of them are the same shape signs, again, I know that that's not for the test amendment, but just to give you an idea of what we have as a prototype, and what we'd like to do. Logo, Berlin Public Schools, uh, I think tastefully done for our, not only our neighborhood and areas, but also the districts themselves, certainly better than what we have in any signage on our, on our facilities at the moment.
Would that apple be there?
Yeah, yeah, well, that is, that's the actual district logo, and the superintendent wanted to have that identification on there.
I don't want it without the apple.
I, I have, I don't have an opinion on that, but, you know, the thing is, if you went down to our, our opening down here, our front door, our logo that's there has the apple, and it has the Berlin Public Schools, and that's what our sign says for the whole district, so...
I think you agree with me.
I don't think, I don't see the test on there.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I wanna make sure I'm sharing the correct screen, so if you just give me a second, uh...
The town logo, then.
Well, you'd be, you'd be interested to see what the...
Just a quick question on the text amendment, I noticed that the text amendment specifies for public schools.
Yep.
Why wouldn't we wanna do the same thing that was a private school, first in the school? Why wouldn't we allow the same option?
So...
Yeah, just curious to, oh, just for discussions, I guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, the private schools, um, they want signs like this also, and they would be able to put their information on it, like I said, I, in just my personal opinion, is the size that's allowed in a residential area is not really good for schools or institutions or anything, which, I didn't wanna step off of something which is pretty, that was designed for the public schools, because, you know, we, we have different sized facilities than most anybody else, so there's, these are, these are small signs relative to our facilities. Certainly, you know, I'm not here to argue against having signs in private schools or anything else, it's just that, you know, what I was asked to propose is...
No, she's just commenting on it, and, yeah.
Can I, um, make a point on that as well?
Yeah.
So, at the staff level, and I did discuss it with corporate council as well, um, and, um, as I understand it, the language was proposed to suit the need of the public school, and that's why the public schools addressed on their needs specifically, however, um, we would suggest that if the public be taken out, and it be for schools. Um, and just on a similar note, um, you notice the next sentence addresses other types of public and semi-public facilities, um, in that we haven't had the opportunity to do an inventory of that. Um, it is something that's been on the to-do list from planning department for a number of years, um, because we do regularly get inquiries, and many of the churches, the schools, um... And many of the churches, the schools, other facilities like that have gone through the variance process. But you then have the point of determining hardship, so a text amendment is more appropriate. And I would just like to keep further amendment to the language on our radar for staff to work towards further amending, you know, address this is this proposal now with suggesting that it be schools instead of public schools. And that we then get the direction to look further into it as time allows for the other uses, but get a better handle on what those uses are. My initial reaction was to relate it to lot size or frontage or something of that nature, but we haven't had that analysis done yet.
Thank you. Alright.
There are any other questions relative to, you know, what we're trying to do with the text amendment? I'll try to answer them. Hopefully it's pretty straightforward. As I said, I tried to make it as simple as possible to, you know, to distinguish the we're asking for. And Maureen was very helpful in getting us where we are here and how we were going through the text amendment. We agreed, just from a professional standpoint, that it pursues a text amendment better than it does variance actually.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're here doing this. And, and just understand from, I wasn't worried about frontage or I wasn't worried about size of lots, because in our case, of course, the lots are huge.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do it other places, you may, but these are not big signs. These are relatively small signs, even though they're larger than the ones you guys allow. It's very difficult with something that a sign the size of four by four and have anybody see it, even from a car. And we want some identification here and some spirit building things for the schools, so that's why. Alright, thank you very much for consideration.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Alright, no, I think that picture that you have up now, that's the conceptual sign or something.
Yeah, these are all concepts that the, so I, while you were talking, I was scrolling through the various signs. He provided you.
This one is the Hubbard. We have one.
Oh, I missed that.
See the size of that? That's Willard. That's not a big sign for a Willard school, that's for sure. And, and this is the one that would be a McGee and it will replace a old Creppin sign that's there right now, which. Sorry, I should take that off the record, but I don't, I don't think anybody likes it. So we're looking for improvements, and by the way, we know we have to go in for, you know, sign permits and CEO and all those whole things. And it would be landscape, we, the town does the landscape of our facilities.
Would they be lit from the bottom? I mean, or just like spotlight lighting, so.
Well, at this point, you know, it doesn't show anything like that. I believe that they'd want to have maybe some low lighting underneath it to light it at night, because we have some night facilities there. But again, you know, we have to go in for the sign permit, do whatever is necessary. But just let, realize it's the town itself that does all landscaping in all of those places. Of course, they have, they have something to say about this also, because the Board of Ed does not have its own site grounds people against the town.
So the.
Thank you very much.
I can adjust the lighting. What I'm looking at quickly is in residential signs, zones, no sign shall be internally illuminated.
Yeah.
And any, any illuminated sign located on a lot adjacent to or across the street from a residential district shall not be illuminated between the hours of ten PM and seven AM.
Yeah.
So it would have to be off at the time that, you know, once the volleyball game ends, it's, or what happened.
Comments, Commission? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing. Oh, well, I didn't think, I think we kind of just, is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission regarding this application?
Saying none, hearing none. Okay, so proceed. But what we're doing was making a motion to close.
I'll make a second.
Okay, so Ms. Dorsey closed, and Sandy seconded. Okay, then for the discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Steve Biella. Steve?
The screen froze a couple of times.
Alright, so I'll take that. Alright, opposed? Opposed. So, okay, here it comes, Steve. Your vote to close the public hearing on the signage for the schools. Okay. Alright, for the discussion. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got it. Okay, site, now we have a special permit site.
Yep, you there?
LLC for renovations of existing buildings relocated.
I don't think.
Five, 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 Weathersfield Road, yes. Steve?
Hello. Hi.
Mind you turn your camera on, Steve.
Hi, can you hear me? You good?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We, we got you, Steve. There's some, so Steve, you can be quiet now. Everyone raise their thumbs. Okay, timeout.
Oh, he's gone. So he might have been having an issue.
Alright.
He'll probably reconnect.
Okay, we're moving on. Thank you for your patience in advance and welcome this evening.
Can you guys hear me? Sorry. I apologize. Don't mean to interrupt. Can you hear me?
We, we got you. We're moving on.
Okay, okay.
Moving on to our next applicant. Okay, so heads up, here is Colin. Go ahead.
My name is Michael Osgood. I'm representing five, 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 Weathersfield Road LLC, better known as Ronnie DeMauro Construction. And as part of our special permit application, we are here to talk about the building that we recently acquired. We recently acquired five, 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 Weathersfield Road, currently ZOPI. And, you know, we're a commercial masonry contractor, but also a general contractor. We were incorporated in nineteen seventy-three and we've been in Rocky Hill since. So we're pretty excited to join the Berlin community and commerce. Yeah, so. I don't know, Maureen, do you want to pull up the?
I still have it.
So I'll explain to you guys. I'll present about the building itself. I have a topography, you know, conceptual plan that I put together. In addition to that, I have some photos of the building. Yeah, so this is the existing building. We did remove some of the landscaping that was in front. The picture posted here is from, I believe, two thousand eighteen. So the facade remains the same. We do have plans in the future to upgrade the exterior of this building, but at this point, you know, we're seeking the special permit just because it's critical for us to get the building permit to renovate the interior of the building so we can move our operations inside. We're probably about three months of construction, give or take on that. Could you go to the next slide, please? So this is a conceptual map that I put together. The building is comprised of twenty-one thousand nine hundred square feet, give or take. There are two floors of office space which are highlighted in green. That's a total of about nine thousand square feet, so each one is about forty-five hundred square feet. Ronnie DeMauro Construction is gonna occupy the first floor, and then the remaining balance of the space is gonna be for warehouse storage. And then, as you can see, towards the rear of the building, there is a fenced-in storage area. This is where we plan to keep most of our equipment and materials that, you know, are too large to store inside. You can see, highlighted in yellow, there's an overhead door that connects to, you know, the outside storage area and a loading dock. So what you see there, there are two flatbed trucks, kind of my, kind of rendering on my own, not a professional by any means. But as you can tell, you know, we park those trucks inside the gated area. That's a six-foot slatted fence, too. Just wanted to note to the commission. So it's out of sight. And then this is a picture of what the yard looks like currently. As you can see, it's a six-foot signs, a six-foot fence with slots. So this would be primarily where our material and equipment would be stored. Most of the time, our material and equipment are not on-site at the building. They're actually on the job site. In the rare occasion that a piece of equipment breaks down, it needs to be brought back to the office for maintenance. You know, this would be the area where we take care of that. With that being said, it's a very rare occasion that we would have to bring a piece of equipment, such as a boom lift or a forklift, back to the office. Most of the time, you're gonna be repaired on-site. So that's, you know, gonna be the primary use of this space right here, which is the material storage. And then, on the next slide, this is a survey that was conducted, but I did have a meeting with the town planner. And we discussed adding the parking spaces. So these parking spaces are drawn by me, the applicant, but they are to scale. So the amount of spaces is correct. So I think within the PI zone, based on the number of, you know, persons we have working in the building as well as square footage, we do meet the parking requirement sufficiently. And lastly, if you wanted to take a look at, you know, this is a floor plan that, you know, these are the existing conditions for the most part. The building is split to office to warehouse. We plan on moving twelve of our office personnel, employees into the office area. And then the warehouse is gonna be used for just material storage. So with that, you know, free to answer any questions from the commission.
Well, you're putting, you're putting new life into that building. And as you said, you have, it's gonna be a label of love. But once you get in there, then you will obviously, as time goes on, when you look to dressing house, the exterior of the building. But it looks like it's a pretty easy switch for you. Any questions, Commission?
No? Yes.
Okay.
You said there will be outside storage.
So it could be anything between, you know, pallets of block, wire or a wall, which is a material that it kind of looks like a mini ladder. It's between eight inches wide and eight feet long. Those are gonna be stored, you know, on the facility. You know, some various masonry equipment, like mixers, but there are very rare occasions that we have equipment there particularly. Oftentimes, there are leftover material, you know, from jobs that we would bring back, but it's very short-lived that they remain in the office because we're usually using it on the next job. We want to use up whatever we can to keep, you know, A, our cost low per job, but B, you know, the office and the storage area as, you know, open as possible.
Would the material be higher than the fence, six-foot fence, or?
No, no. I mean, our scaffold frames are six-foot high, so they would probably be placed, if you see along the building, there's kind of a white lean-to roof. That would be where the scaffold would be placed. And it's, you know, it's certainly out of sight for, you know, yeah, you can see right here, that would be out of sight to the general public. The only possible, you know, vantage point would be the building next door, which is, I believe, a manufacturer. So at that point, you know, any equipment that would be close to the height of the fence will be located under that lean-to roof right there.
And in the warehouse itself, the warehouse area, what would be stored with that?
We have various material that we use that is, you know, weather sensitive. So part of our line of work, we do stucco and evis. So that type of material has to be stored at least forty degrees or higher. It's water-based material. So oftentimes, that stuff would be placed in the warehouse, too.
Commission, any other questions?
Maureen, do you have any concerns for the town?
No, I just want to note that the regulations for the PI zone call for a special permit use, and that's where the change of use comes in, being seen by the commission. We had substantially no staff comments from the police chief, engineering, Berlin Water Control, Health District, or Inland Wetlands. And as standard, the fire marshal and building inspector both commented that proper permitting upon approval is necessary for any renovations, including their code compliance or any occupancy changes. If the category changes from what they have, it comes up to today's code. And so that would be the only comment I would make is a condition of approval that staff comments be followed through with. And other than that, it's simple. Oh, the outside, after the record, outside storage would have to meet the outside storage regulations for industrial zones, which includes the screening. They have showed significantly that the street, that the storage will be within that area. And I'm not sure if he commented on it, but I thought some of your parking of equipment would be all in that area, too, not utilizing your parking spaces and your trucks move daily.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Showing on the slide before, kind of my conceptual plan, you know, company vehicles and equipment that will be stored overnight primarily would be in this area right here, you know, where, where the parking lot is employee and customer parking. That's gonna be, you know, during working hours, you know, just deploy vehicles in and out.
Alright, because we're in public hearings, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission either for or against this application? Now would be the time to do so. I see that Chris Edge is with us.
Chris Edge, two forty, can you repeat again?
Yep.
Yes, I have been talking, I don't know, already doing construction for probably three to four years. They have been in Rocky Hill in a building too small for them for a while. The good news is they're gonna bring their operation here. They actually have also purchased a property next door, which is the vacant site that we're sitting near. The corner used to be a house. So long-term, hopefully is able to develop there as well. I think this is great because they're a growing firm. We're gonna get their employees. This building has been vacant for probably close to four to five years. Company that was here was purchased by a larger group and they made a decision to consolidate to Missouri. So essentially, the tire operation picked up one day and disappeared. So good news about this is it's gonna be under local ownership. It's gonna be under occupied and it's gonna be really.
A good addition.
It is. I mean, in fact, to kind of what I say is in Berlin, we're really good at making things, fixing things and installing things. These guys will do a little bit of all of the above. And I know it is, again, locally owned, multi-generational. It's my favorite kind of firm. Economic development is very much mine.
Thank you. Alright, any other comments for against the application? Alright, hearing none. Do you have a motion to close or continue? Alright, Sandy Capola is gonna close the public hearing, and Ms. Dorsey's gonna second. Further discussion on that, so all those in favor? Aye. Steve Biella. Yep, you can say, yep, okay, got you, Steve. Alright, he's good to go.
Thank you.
Alright, no problem. Moving on into old business. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, site plan amendment, the application is Thomas Pokemo for site improvements and business use of a portion of property at one seventy-eighth and Britton Road. And this was presented at the May nineteen twenty-two meeting. Okay, so.
Can I give a quick, so we did get a revised plan and review that. It does have substantial changes or details added to it that satisfy, satisfy staff's concerns with the most part. Were removed, such as the second sign that was shown. Setbacks are now shown. The driveway into the property was increased to the width required for a two-way drive of twenty feet. And so I think the focus of the commission, and you, I'm sorry for the delay in getting the comments. I realized today you hadn't gotten the preliminary comments I made because of the change to the plan. I hadn't sent those initially. I thought I was just doing an update and then realized they never went out.
Um, I thought I was just doing an update and then realized they never went out. Um, so the substantial comments from the staff standpoint are that DOTP permitting be required, be obtained, um, specifically the encroachment permit for any work, um, in the state way. New Britain Road is a state road. Um, the zoning chart on the plan seems to have a couple of, need a couple of tweaks. Um, the information on the plan is accurate, but the, I don't think the surveyor properly updated the zoning chart on all those items. So prior, prior to applications for permits, I would recommend that those be, um, modified. There are a couple of things on the plan I wanted to point out to the commission. Um, the driveway area that I'll say is drawn as, um, is to be utilized like a driveway for the existing home. Um, is shows tandem parking, which is allowed for residential use, um, single family. Um, however, it comes right up to the, the storage area for the new, for the, um, renovated building, the outbuilding, and, um, I would suggest that in accordance with the regulations, a ten-foot landscape strip be added in front of there. They are, um, removing the existing door that's in that area. It had been a garage at one time. It was renovated a few years ago to be an enclosed space as opposed to a garage. Um, unidentified use, storage, what have you. Um, and that, so that man door is proposed to be removed. There should be landscaping there to divide it from the driveway. Um, the, there's the parking area that they put at the northern end of the site, all gravel. It's a gravel lot now. Um, planning to continue that aside from the handicap parking, which is required by code to be paved. Um, and we'll have to have the paving to the extent required by codes for that. Um, but there's a space shown to the left that's not required, and it's actually a little shy of the nine feet. If the scale is correct on the plan and has the trash containers next to it. Um, to me, it looks as though if any car is going to pull into that space, they'll, they could clip the side of the building. And I think that blatant space should be re-landscaped as landscape area and/or have a, um, the dumpster, the trash container. They're only proposing trash containers. It is proposed to be of personal service use. It's a small-scale commercial, um, area. So I'm not surprised the only, you're looking for a trash container as opposed to looking in trash and recycling, as opposed to dumpsters. Um, but perhaps they can swing those into that area and then landscape the rest of it. Um, the health district has indicated that they need to have independent water and sewer hookup. And Kinston Water District should, um, um, should be approached on that, so that should be, um, secured before permitting and, and, um, um, occupancy, um, or occupancy, I should say, um, in accordance with the, those regulations. Um, the health district would need to do a plan review because it is a personal service use. Barbershops, hairdos lines, those kinds of uses are under their purview. Um, and again, the code review for the change of occupancy from the building department and fire marshal, their codes, because they are changing the use code. Um, as standard comment, any signage, they did update the signage. It appears as though the proposed signage plan, um, now meets the zoning requirements for setback in location. Of course, there's no sign proposed, and those would all obtain separate building permits for those. Um, and, um, any lighting, commercial use, all comply with the regulations. So those are my comments, um, or my updated comments from the, the first plan. The applicant is online. I don't know if he has, uh, had a presentation. I kind of took it over and I'm sorry for that. But I thought simply, yep.
All right.
I'd like to, uh, ask a question. Is this on the first row? Uh, seven eleven, uh, while tire, right? Uh, that, the furniture has no sidewalks. And the furniture wall, tire, and while furniture seven eleven have, have sidewalks. So I'm assuming that sidewalk should be put in here continually.
Um, neither myself or, yeah, or the interdepartmental moment to review caught that. Um, but I do believe that is a site plan change criteria. Unless we invite the commission.
There's sidewalks on the side of the road, yes.
This is the other side of the side. Now, it is a state road, so I would want to, um, make sure whether the state as well as Public Works has, um, is, would approve that. But it certainly does, I'm seeing sidewalks on both sides. Oh, I'm probably not sharing this on the screen yet. So, hold on, let me share. Okay, so you can see on the north side of seven of, of the convenience store, of the convenience store, it's no longer convenient. It's now going to be Happy Mart, as for everyone's knowledge. And they have the sidewalk that comes to their parking area. And then, it's pretty hard to see if there's sidewalk here, although it did look like on the planometric view, it looks as though there is sidewalk there. I can't really, no, that's as far as this will zoom, but I can possibly get the street view. Yeah. Then stop again. So this is, this looks, looks as though there's maybe a path that people take there. And then they pick up, yeah, just south of this, this is this property. And, and then this is the one next door. This would be this lot. This is the building we're talking about. Am I standing on the right screen, I hope? Tom, maybe you can answer, are you looking at the screen of the street view?
Yeah, I, I really can't see it that well. Hello.
View, I'm on the right screen, that's what I'm looking for, if I'm on the right screen of the street view.
Yes, I believe, I, I, I can't recall, uh, good evening, lady chair and commissioners, Maureen. Um, Tom Kokomo for the record. I can't recall, uh, if you're looking at the property, so that would be south side, there's a house. I don't believe there's sidewalks on the south side. There may be sidewalks on the north side, which is the, the former seven eleven. I know they're for certain on the, on the perpendicular street, but I'm not sure about New Britain Road. Maybe not, my, I, but I believe you're looking at the right map, Maureen.
Okay, so those two lots, um, adjacent to each other do not have the sidewalks?
No, I think they're up the street across from McDonald's where there was the, um, was it? I don't know what was there for a while, a hairdresser or something.
Yeah, the plaza definitely has them.
Yeah.
Once you get, once you get to that, are you guys following me as I go down the street here? Yeah, the gap of two properties without the, without sidewalks, so that would be connected.
So anyone else have any? Anyone else have any other questions? One of the concerns was whether or not sidewalks would be required on the property.
As we wrote in, uh, the, the sidewalk, then, right? Because I want to, now to set a road, McDonald's, yeah.
Yeah.
And the, uh, office, there, uh, are the sidewalks, the, and the, uh, but, uh, on both sides of the road, to our, to our.
Yeah. Yeah.
By the, by the, uh, dirt path there in front of the house, the people do walk.
Yeah.
I do believe that sidewalks are a requirement unless we invite the commission. And I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm sorry, I missed that in my analysis.
No, don't worry, I mean, hit on everything else.
You've been, you're so.
All right, so that would be a, would be a question of the sidewalk, so. And I think, uh, the point is made, there's a, obviously a full beaten track, that's there. Seems to be space and not for sidewalk, so. All right, so add that to the list, I guess. All right, any other further questions on this for Mr. Kokomo or? Tom, I hope you're good with that.
I understand, uh, and the necessity for it, so I appreciate that. So, but I appreciate, and I appreciate your time and, and essentially I think Maureen hit on everything. And I apologize that it's been a few months since I've been, your pretty face is.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay, that's okay.
Uh, but, um, yeah, I think, so, so if, if, uh, I'm comfortable with all staff comments, concerns, and, uh, and look forward to your approval, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. All right, so, permission?
I'll make a motion.
All right, go ahead with the motion, Brian.
Motion to approve with all staff and town comments and with the sidewalks.
Terrific, we had the motion, we have the second by Ms. Jorsey for Diane, further discussion. And all those in favor?
Aye.
I, as opposed. Okay, great, Steve, thank you. So those opposed, so moved, okay, uh, congratulations, Tom.
Tom, just one second. You still there?
He goes.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here, yeah.
Uh, Maestri's Berlin.
Wait, 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 wait. I don't think we can.
On, of this, he just promised we cleaned up, I just wanted air to get.
I, I hired someone and they started. And they.
Yeah, they put it on both there.
But.
All right, well, that's.
Huh?
For some other day. All right, let's finish out the business, good night, Tom. All right, proposed revised amendment to the zoning regulations for attorney dentist, uh, Sin, Sinaviva, on behalf of Red Lease LLC, that is six H three, special permit uses for the self-storage facilities. Okay, commission, here we go.
And my comments would be that based on what Maureen mentioned were in public hearings, I thought was reasonable, kind of what we were looking to do to make sure there was no spot zone or anything like that. I think you just, uh, addressed our concerns with the potential structure, the buffering. Um, I guess, maybe that being said, I would make a motion to, to accept the text amendment, the eight months, uh, made by Maureen.
Okay, it's modified.
Yes, it's modified. Okay, so we have the motion goes to Sandy, and I kind of think goes to Diane. Further discussion on the matter. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so moved. Congratulations. Yeah, proposed amendment to section nine A sixty, sign permitted to all district schools, assigned permit. Jeffrey C. Pugno, Director of Operations for all the schools. Okay, and what do we have on this? Make a motion to approve, uh, subject to the, um, changes that we discussed, you know, earlier with respect to removal of public. And so that the signs are, um, acceptable for all schools. Okay, and. At logo, at Apple. I, I, it's, I don't know, I just, it's just really a, intentional that Apple doing business, it's a Berlin school.
As a teacher.
All the signs, you all have it in there. Okay, terrific, all right, so we have the motion by Diane. One second, second is Sandy, for the discussion.
The discussion, this is like the same staff, uh, she said to, one of the items that they would go with, uh, aggress with the other schools and stuff like that, churches.
Yeah.
As that way.
We got it, okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Last, the special.
Can I have, who's, who's seconded?
Second, um, Sandy.
Okay, thank you.
Special site plan applicant, you have been putting my mind on black. I had to try to roll back the tape, this is not going back that fast. Okay, special site plan application of five 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 Weatherfield LLC for interior renovations, for existing building to relocate commercial construction business, yeah, five 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 Weatherfield Avenue. From, what is it? What do we have on this?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Okay, motion approved with staff comments by Brian Roken.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, Steve, you missed the second. See, next time we gotta get in here.
Gets me every time.
All right, I know she does, she's done it. So further discussion on this, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Welcome to Berlin. More to doing business with you. All right, um, okay, so, yes, Maureen, because we're not going to adjourn, so. Well, we're not going to adjourn because Maureen wants, you know, to support us or whatever, control us.
No, no, um, so I have asked Fran to, to try to, um, incorporate or help me remember that we want to add planner or, um, economic development, development director comments at the end, just so that, because Chris, I'm sure is behind me walking up and he has asked to speak this evening.
Okay.
So I am requesting that, um, that be added as an item tonight, so it can.
Okay, okay, so motion to add Chris to the agenda. The economic development director. You could, but he's here. So, Steve, here's your chance to make.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'll be the good guy and.
All right. Stefaella makes the motion to add, do we have a second for her? All right, Brian second. All those in favor, aye, aye.
All right. Twelve nineteen, Berlin Turnpike, uh, D and L town. Property, D and L town, across the street from Duncan Donuts. It is at the bottom.
Duncan Donuts, that's right, that's right.
So the property is currently being looked at right now by an estate group who would like to bring in an operation that would be very similar to Tyler Equipment and the other folks who recently approved, whose name I'm forgetting right now, Alter. Men's over ten thousand square foot building and have equipment, sales, service, delivery out of that location. Um, if they did so, they would likely also purchase a hotel next door. But what would need to happen is that text amendment would have to be added because it's not company owned. So I just wanted to get a feel from this commission if they thought that was used, they thought could make sense there. Before they went forward to the text amendment, again, they, um, it is a company that's currently in business, has two different locations, including one in Mass and one in Milford. in business, has two different locations, including one in Mass and one in Milford. So they would come here essentially probably either tear down or reuse the building to some degree and really to do service and sales of equipment, um, throughout Connecticut.
Question.
Sure.
D and L being, staying in Berlin or moving somewhere else?
I, I, to be determined, I do not know that yet. I don't know that yet. Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I have been in touch with the agent that represents the, um, folks are gonna come in, I have not spoken with D and L directly.
No, D and L likes their spot because of the easy to access, the both I would say, or.
I know. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they definitely do, and I'm sure if something happens, they get a couple nickels, which they have, but this is, yeah, it's more just an invalid, like, to get your take on it, I mean, it's, it's something that, um.
So.
The property is pretty well jammed.
I, I just want to note that, um, just for perspective from the planning purposes and you looking at it from zoning and planning, this is the SPDB zone, which, you know, we know we have, um, could, issues regularly with how to get that developed, um, and that's something that you've been talking about with the, um, plan of conservation and development, or we expect to be talking about with the plan of conservation and development, so that's the zone. And it would be a text amendment to that language that adds uses, right? That's where they're, they're talking about.
With some of the, um, personal service uses. That's a similar thing, we would add a use, um, and we'd similar probably uh, sales, service of equipment folks, I can't remember what it is, but it's, it's the same language that essentially the extended compressor is operating under and how Alta got approved under.
Again, uh, make sure that, uh, whoever wants purchases, uh, sees where that back line is. What they use. What's supposed to be.
Yeah, I, I, I did notice that, um.
Wow.
At the P O C D meeting, uh, for economic development, um, the representative from the family was actually their regular favorite. So that was good news.
Where's the hotel?
Hotel is just north of the Dale and Dale and Motel, you know, motel right there. So. Yeah, so I mean.
Is that why it was in the circle?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the, the, the good news is they, they want to be engaged, they want to see something happen on the property, which is good.
Yeah.
It is all under a belief, one LLC for the first time ever. Where before it's been boring parties, I guess, the best way to put it, so. Again, I, I want to bring this to you, uh, I, I think it's interesting that they have an interest in coming, because we now have, again, Steelwrist and Alta and Tyler, who are construction companies here, uh, if they were to take this property and the one next door, clean it up, that'd be great. Again, it would be a special permit application, so this body would have a lot of say on look and feel and the like, which I think is important, especially because again, it's, it's the first property you see when you turn off of, of, when you turn onto the turnpike from tonight. I mean.
I think it would be. Yeah, I'd like to see something happen with that property.
Yeah.
So I'm supportive of it.
I'm supportive of it too, and, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, I do like D and L, so you can reach out to them and see, I don't know, maybe a bigger spot, uh, you'd extra crews.
Yeah, I, I will, I would definitely will, again, and tonight was kind of a, a first shot at it, and then what I need to do is to reach out even to D and L directly, or I believe there's also an agent working with them to kind of figure out what their long-term plans are.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to, again, I, I don't want to be too far ahead without getting your opinions first.
Go underhouse. Go underhouse at that.
It is, uh, the underlying zone is BT two, so it would not. Um, because they are automotive and I believe licensed by DMV. I don't believe any DMV that are with BT two. So, at this point, my understanding is it changed hands, but exactly who and what they're doing is somewhat unknown.
Can't find it?
Well.
And it's, it's interesting, because if you look at where the garage is, the garage is on probably three tenths of an acre, yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
The garage is on three tenths of an acre, and then you have another five acres plus or minus, so. I guess technically you could use building for automotive on the point three acres, anything beyond that would essentially be. I, I think anything to be looked at at this point, but if this is a move forward, absolutely, I can have a discussion with D and L, try to figure out what would work.
Yeah.
Keep that locked.
This one.
Yeah.
I'm very interested.
This was like clean operations according to the.
It is, and, and, and I think that would be part of the entire thing, which again, was, was part of what, um, Alta has been told and what Tyler has done, which is to keep it quality, because I think that's, that's the entire thing, is if we're gonna, if we're gonna get new, let's not go backwards. Let's, let's make it cleaned up and, uh, let's get something that we can goes to what we do, but yeah, I could definitely keep in touch with D and L. Thank you.
Terrific, yep. And then the, the, go ahead with the text amendment. All right, there's one other thing I'd like to add, if I can, really quick, just for the discussion. Um, I've, I've been thinking about this for some time, and, um, I just want to run it past the commission, so if I have some support for it, if I do, I do, and I don't, yeah, it's fine. But we've had a lot of growth in this town, especially in the way of apartments, and, um, it's almost to a point where it's overwhelming. And, uh, I was wondering how the commission's felt about possibly a moratorium, um, multi-family housing, this apartment stuff. The only reason being is that I think we need to kind of take a breath to see the growth that's happening so fast. It's almost like we have to assess where we are, uh, and, and assess where we are in our housing stuff, and if we want to continue with pursuing this. The other thing is, in light of the fact that we only have a planner and a secretary, and we don't have an assistant planner, we don't have a Z B A person, there's a lot of stuff on the Z B A side that's always through the cracks. And, um, Maureen, I know you're pouring yourself into the planning aspect, and I appreciate that. Um, and you're doing a great job. And this has really supported on you. It's just that it is coming to the point where every time we turn around, somebody's coming in with these, uh, apartment complexes. And now I'm hearing, you know, just off the street or in my travels around town, I hear that people are starting to notice all the growth, and they think it's, the growth is good, but they think, I, I think the citizens at some point are getting a little overwhelmed, but then they're like, what's happening to our little town? What's happening to the flavor of it? So, but, but more to the fact that you've got a lot on your plate, and it might help us, if we just kind of take a breath for maybe six months or something, and just see where we are. And I don't know if that's a, if that's a viable thing, but, you know, because every time you turn around, somebody wants to.
I, I just think that it's, it's, it's a good idea. Uh, but I also think that the location where the development is happening now, basically, Pearl Turnpike, you know, with, even with the big service center and everything else. Now this equipment company and everything's happening on the Pearl Turnpike. Uh, which is something that we wanted to see for years, is that Pearl Turnpike become viable.
But I'm not talking about businesses, I'm talking about towns.
Well, I under, I understand that, I understand that, but that part of making the Pearl Turnpike viable is having the population there to feed the rest of the. If it was a problem in different sections of town, I could definitely be worried about it. The word, there's a way it's developed right now, I don't seem to worry. You know, I understand people that they've become, you know, people that are trying to meet the same, same conversation.
Yeah.
Uh.
And it's.
You know, when I'm looking at future, what, what's being developed now, and, and, and I don't think I want to slow down the development of Pearl Turnpike.
But here's, here's, here's the thing, I don't want to slow things down, I do want to be considerate of it, but I also don't want to burn our planner out.
I hear you there.
And to tell you the truth, sometimes I wonder when I look at these agendas and your notes and everything else that you're doing, and the plan of conservation and development, I know we all have rough times and jobs and everything, but I look at it, I said, geez, I think I would have just said. Forget it.
I agree. Oh, she's over.
If you guys are not, yeah, but the problem is, is we can't find, no. The problem is that we can't get a zoning officer, the problem is we can't find an assistant planner to help her out.
Well, since we get an assistant coming.
We do, we do have an assistant planner coming next month.
Okay.
It will be a month out before they can begin.
But this person still has to come up to speed and everything.
Yes, and we're continuing to interview for zoning officers.
When we were doing the, uh, affordability plan, I mean, this was a concern that I remember bringing up. Um, the fact is that we've done a lot of projects, have approved a lot of projects over the last few years. And we had, yet to see them, you know, they're still in the groundwork, where we see a lot of foundations and things going in. But we haven't seen really any completed projects yet, to see, you know, where Berlin sits. Um, so I'm not opposed to this idea, I think it might be wise to, you know, see, talk to, um, attorney de Paula and see how, like, this would work out legally. Um. I mean, a short term, short term moratorium doesn't sound like a bad idea to me.
I, I don't, I do not oppose a short one, you know, uh.
Well, that's what I mean.
You know, sixty, ninety days, something like that, that we can, they were breaking in, 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 uh.
Well, I think you'll know more.
Re study.
I, I thought six months, but, I mean, I don't, I don't.
I, I will just remind that the, a portion of the scope of the project for F H I, our consultant for the Affordable Housing Plan and P O C D is to look at the B T V regulations and, and some of the other regulations as well, but, um, that was specifically called out in the scope, um, to see how that is coming together, and that's, um, it's in process, obviously, that's part of the analysis that we'll come as we continue with the P O C D process.
Yeah, so maybe going up, that we wait till we schedule it forward in line with the results of our P O C D, which would be around that six months in timeframe.
That makes sense to me. That's right.
So I can, you, you mean, align the end of it? But, yeah, that's, okay, I wasn't sure everybody was hearing it the same way. Um, so I can certainly approach Corporation Council and, um, you will recall with the cannabis moratorium, we added language to the regulations for add it, for putting in language for a moratorium on things, you know, and how to do that, we figured out that process and put that language in the regulations, so, um, I can talk to her about.
So we do have a special meeting coming up, or is this something that we could remember the agenda to include or?
It would have to be scheduled, it would be a regulation amendment, moratoriums are regulation amendments, so it would have to be posted and, um, sent to the regional agency and, um, scheduled for a public hearing.
I'm just talking about just the discussion.
Yeah, so if, if we could come up with language fast enough, we can put it on as a as a scheduling of the public hearing. So. We do it, I'm not sure we could do it for the cannabis meeting, it might have to be for the next meeting, um, just for date, for time. But I can look at the, I can look at it and see whether we, no, no, and see whether or not, yeah, but thank you for reminding me that was, of what that date was. Um, and see. I don't know if we posted that meeting yet. Um, or what the language or the posting of that meeting is yet. So, if, um, if we can add it, and, and Corporation Council thinks it's appropriate to add it, when we're specifically dealing with cannabis and the legislation.
Figure out the legality.
Yeah. I'll, I'll put the discussion of it and scheduling for a public hearing on the, because then you can discuss it further at public, at the, when you go to schedule the public hearing, if you want to discuss whether or not you want to schedule a public hearing, you can do that at that time. If you want to move forward with scheduling the public hearing, um, you can decide you do or don't want to schedule it. Um, but we'll try to get that, um, ASAP, as soon as I, I'm allowed to.
Yeah. Exactly, and so it's no slide against you, right, the job that you're doing, it's just that I, I do know that the pressure that.
I appreciate it.
Right, we're just trying to save you, Sandy, and also ours too. We don't want to, we don't want to blow up the town, and then we're responsible for it. And the last item I have is that, it used to be back in the day, way back, I remember that we used to do the pledge of allegiance before the planning is only for planning meetings. And, and I would like to reintroduce that if we can, is that.
I'd love to see that, sorry to cut you off, John, but I'd.
It just suddenly occurred, because I think we're the only commission that doesn't do it, I mean, the cemetery commission does it, the police commission. And so I think we need to just add it briefly on to.
I like that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, yay.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's all I have, so I'll ask you for an adjournment at nine twenty-eight. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Diane, who will second?
I got the second.
Okay, you guys, you're all right, see. Please, honestly, we miss you here. Brian and.
Yeah, uh.
Overwhelmed.
I'll be back.
My three, they got three gals and only two guys here, you're missing the fun.
Yeah, I know.
So all those in favor, we have, we have the, we have the motion, we have the second, all right? That's it.
Have a good night, everybody, drive safe.
We'll see you on the fourteen, he hopes to.
Yep, fourteen.
Good night.
Good night.